Your God, we thank you for all your many blessings and thank you for being so good to us when we're so unworthy. Your God, we just thank you for all your love and grace and mercy that you give us every day. And we just pray that as we go through this meeting, Your God, that we'll do everything that would be for the best interest of the city of Centralville and also everything done to your glory, Your God. Thank you again for loving us and forgiving us where we fail you for all this, I pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless.
Thank y'all. Chris, if you turn it on. Counselor, call, Mr. Warren.
Ray just sent me a text, I'm not making it, he just landed.
Yeah, he's, he's been on business.
Said it, they were delayed because plane maintenance, I said, well, please, don't get on the plane until it's maintained.
I'd rather be down here wishing I was up there than up there wishing I was down here.
That's right, he said he might still make it, but he says he just landed, so.
Alright, need to approve the meetings. Y'all can see we have a regular meeting then I call me. Motion by Mr. Mike, be second. Excuse me. If y'all are hard to call, look it up.
I second him, I say, if everything was good.
Second by Mr. Diane, discussion questions, all in favor. Aye, can you pose, same thing. Alright, oh, business, approve the annexation of question by Detective Terry Ward. It's already gone through the Mitch, I mean Mitch had the paperwork.
We hadn't voted on that, have we?
That's what we're doing tonight.
Okay.
It got brought up at the special meeting, but we need to, we need to do it at a regular meeting like tonight.
Can we table it after the election?
There's no need to.
I, I assume could.
You can, I mean, it's whatever the council votes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, we table it after the election.
So, a motion been made tabled, I mean.
Till, we're, till.
Till after the election.
To table the board annexation.
Till after the election.
Why?
I just didn't think, my opinion, it's my opinion only, is that we just didn't need an annex anymore, table the next administration. That's the only thing, you know.
Well, that, that wouldn't really matter, I mean, it's just annex, somebody's asking, we did the other one, you know. It's not like he's gonna run for an office, cause I think, you know.
Don't worry about that.
No, we couldn't do that.
We, we got a lot going on.
I'm just saying, I mean, an annexation is just a vote, annex the property, pay the question, know the proper paperwork.
I made the motion and if anybody don't want to sack this man. I made it, called it, got enough going on already, and, uh, we just need to wait till that next administration.
What, what, what do we have going on that would interfere with annexation, buddy?
You don't know what's going on here?
Yeah, I know exactly what's going on. But to insinuate that we got too much going on to vote on an annexation is, is ludicrous.
And that's not ludicrous, just my opinion.
You can have an opinion, I'm just saying, I mean, it's a simple vote for annexation, I'm not.
Well, I, hey, look, if they.
What are we on today?
Mike, I, you can't change it, I can't change it. All I can do is make a motion, if nobody's sacking it, does not even mean you can maybe even talk about it. Right? Am I right?
I mean, I mean, yeah, legitimate reason.
What, what, I just give you my.
It seems like there's some underlying reason.
Really, that's your opinion, I ain't got nothing.
It's an opinion.
I just made the motion, nobody want to sack it, it'd be fine.
I second it, cause I think we need to wait until that could wait.
Uh, motion second.
I mean, it has nothing to do with.
Yeah, I just, it makes sense to me, to my view.
Motion is second, uh, discussion questions. Uh, all in favor. Can you pose?
Aye.
Alright, you get that Tracy? Thank y'all. Election business, gotta, uh, appoint a election manager, Dorinda's already been to the class, she's, she's agreed to do, so we just need to let Dorinda, her neighbor is the election manager.
I can't think, she already was, cause we said that.
Yeah, well, we just had.
We just hadn't officially done it.
Had business with it. Uh, do a motion for that, be second.
I made the motion.
Motion, Miss Diane, be second, second, all right, discussion questions, all in favor. Aye, can you pose, alright, add some tea ballot manager. Tracy?
Um. I really feel like Dorinda could debate, but that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Last year, last time we had a election, May and D, both of them, cause I came back, we came back in the, uh, what do you call it, expanding out of the election.
Yeah, we came back.
We came back, May and D, both of them.
I think Dorinda probably could.
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, motion to name Dorinda, add some tea manager.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Mike, discussion questions, all in favor. Poll worker conversation, oh, sorry, all in favor, aye, can you pose, sorry. Poll worker conversation, last time it was, uh, what did we look at, Tracy?
I didn't, I mean, I didn't find anything about how much we paid the poll workers, so I don't know.
We've actually got, uh. We've actually got a couple of months to do that, what did y'all, for, yeah.
For the general election, it was a hundred and fifty.
Oh, you didn't work the city election?
No, cause I'm.
You was on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We've got, we, we'll table that, we got time to do that, which gotta come up, alright?
Can we just make a motion to pay what we paid last time at the last election?
What did that?
Cost me, had the same money.
What did that?
So, how is that Tracy, you can find that out?
I can track.
Yeah.
I can track.
So, whatever we paid last year.
Last election.
Last city election.
Last city election.
Alright, motion to keep paid same. Donovan, be second.
Second.
Is it, okay, can you discuss your question, all in favor?
Cause that election, take us on, it's a general election.
No, although it's seventy-seven.
I was gonna say, it's all been the same amount, but I.
But you were saying to.
It could've been that last time, I, I don't know. Could've been that same. Cause Stephanie will actually, both of them contested, her office will do all that stuff. Alright, Centralville Main Street, can you think of this case?
Uh, I can give a bit on the river problem.
Yeah.
Um, it went very well, uh, thank you for, to the city of Centralville and to the city council, everybody that's on, uh, here today for supporting, um, including Brad, he's not leaving right now, but, um, whether, you know, y'all attended or just told people about it or financially supported, um, both my board, both myself and my board extremely appreciate that. The event went very well, from what I counted, we had about two hundred and fifty people attend, we're by tickets, that includes volunteers, um, it went very well. Uh, we had, we did definitely make a profit off of that, um, we had the event about paid for, uh, with sponsorships before the event, which was our goal. Another goal of mine was to have, um, to be fully stocked with volunteers for the event, cause our past few events is something that we've struggled with having volunteers, you know, just having one or two people do everything. Uh, but we had, you know, so many volunteers for the event, we had some people sitting around, which I, I counted as a success and everybody had a great time. Um, we had a state trooper donate his time to do security for the event, but we also had some police officers stop by and we welcomed them and I appreciate them stopping by just to make sure everything went right, but I'm still, uh, adding up all the volunteer hours we had just to be able to say, you know, how many, how many hours people donated to the event, which I think is important to keep track of, but we made a profit and, um, I think it's important to note that we had about two hundred and fifty people there. Um, I'm confident that we would've had three hundred and fifty to four hundred people if we could've flooded the river, but that's not something that affected us, I mean, it affected us, but I think it was still a positive event and I don't think it's anything to, to be upset about. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention is that one thing that we want to improve on for any event that we have in the future is trying to get more local people involved, most of the people that attended, because we didn't have the river flooding portion, we're in local people, but we'd love to see more local people besides the same two to three hundred people attend and, um, we'd love, you know, both the city council and the cities help with that, just to, you know, cause we're here to provide the service to the community and I feel like there's a lot more people in our community that can benefit from it just besides the, the two hundred and fifty people that were there this past time. Um, most of our events have something for everybody, whether you're five years old or ninety-five, and I think that's something that is important to, to attend, I think we need to continue to encourage people to, to come to events and get out of the house and, um, support your community.
The kids section was popular.
Yes, you know, had lots of little ones running around and getting snow cones and.
Only one injured, Donovan pulled a muscle dance out there.
No, I dance all the time, he might dance on occasion when he wanna be seen, I dance all the time, even at home, he dance when he wanna be seen. I dance all the time.
All the time.
All the time.
But I think, um, it was very successful, like I said, we're still adding up a few numbers, um, like on our documentation side, but we made a profit and um, we had about two hundred and fifty people there, which I think is a suc, is a success, especially because we were a little worried about the river conditions affecting us, but thank y'all for supporting us and for everybody for attending and, um, just telling everybody that you can about the event.
Hey, thank you, more, cause y'all already worked hard for that.
The garbage cans look great.
Yes, and the cushions, yeah.
Makes a difference.
Does everybody say to me?
I guess.
Thank CHPC and the extension service for that. CHPC applied for grant and matched.
Oh, great, thank y'all.
Katie, y'all had enough to master, correct?
Yes.
Y'all did. And that, that, that band that y'all got?
Yes.
They was fantastic.
Yes, they, they're out of Mississippi.
They played music for all different ages.
Yes.
They did real good.
I'm interested in having them back, um, I know that, you know, they were lively and kept everybody engaged most of the time and uh, I think that's something that, you know, we wanna have diversity with different bands, or, you know, different bands come in and not have the same ones, but I think they would definitely be popular if we brought them back.
Yeah, they were friendly with the, with the crowd, always.
Yes, yeah.
But then when we saw that in Monday, I mean, I was still like that.
Sure. Although they were good, it was different.
They, they different.
Yeah.
They were just different.
Uh, chief's meeting.
Okay, everybody's got one of the sheets, um, just kinda give y'all update on the remodel, we are getting further and further with it, we're in a transition now, making the new evidence room, uh, functionable, but everything else is done on it. Uh, the desk that y'all approved me to get, they came in, I've just gotta get them put together. Um, as y'all see on number three, I'm working with, uh, RC and D on a kind of a special grant, uh, that we've applied for, to see where we come and where we stand with that, uh, is yet to be determined. Um, our SROs, they have already, they done their conference this week and they've also reached out to me and said, hey, look, this is something we wanna look at when we get back, so we're gonna sit down. I think they got some good information down there that could help us be more beneficial and efficient with the SROs. Um, as Katie said, I asked her the other day, she heard anything on the copper crawl, I hadn't heard anything, so I, that's a success, so.
Everything's great.
Um, one thing that came to, uh, light this morning, and I talked with the mayor on it earlier today, AmeriGas.
I saw that on Facebook.
That is, uh, gonna be conducted by the state propane board. The inspector, he's gonna be here. This guy that is gonna take, all the liquid is gone, but the residual fumes and stuff like that are still there, so they have to be, you can't evaporate those into the air, you gotta take and do something with them. Uh, but they are gonna monitor that, uh, he said it may be a eight to sixteen hour process. They will only do it during daylight hours. Uh, the guy that is going to do it, that is his specialty, he knows what he's doing, he knows the safety protocols and all that from the email that was sent to me, um, that is gonna start Tuesday morning about eight, eight-thirty. And we are gonna have a section of that road on Belcher Street shut down. Uh, basically from where the BMC, uh, maintenance building is, all the way up to the stop sign at the corner where CMC is. Uh, we don't want anybody going down through there, because he said, he said it would be, uh, a flame about four or five foot just protruding into the air and he said that he would take and monitor it and check everything and, uh, all the safety checks and all that protocol. The propane inspector's gonna be there as well, so giving y'all some information on that. Um, the other thing I had mentioned last month is since Wells has went to our other SRO for the middle school, I am shy of one officer for the road. I know we had talked about it in, you know, last month about just bringing it up, that I'm looking for one. I have got some good applicants in, uh, I have not pursued it past the point of just a general conversation with them on the why, you know, why you wanna do this, or, you know, what, what do you think you could do? I haven't went anything past that point, and I just gonna double check with y'all, do I need to wait on this, do I need to take, pursue it, or?
Oh, by the bump, the, uh, the, uh.
No, the.
Also got another officer.
Oh, man, there's an officer, we're one officer down.
What did Wells doing since school is out?
Uh, he is actually on patrol.
Both, both of them?
Both are marked, but, we are getting those, uh, June, July and the first few days of August, we are getting to utilize them, you know, for city patrol and, uh, tasks that come up for, you know, everyday police jobs, um.
And I kinda say we wait a little bit.
Wait a little bit?
Okay.
Couple of months since we got them to fill in right now.
Alright, well.
You're not short one, but right now.
Not right now.
You will be when school starts back.
The thing about it is, when you start hiring officers or entertaining the idea of hiring officers, you have to work on their application, because they have to go through psych eval, they have to go through physicals, they have to go through several different things before the packet could even be sent into the state for them to be approved. And you have to have that done thirty days prior to the academies starting. There is a academy that is gonna start in the middle of August, and then the next one would start in January, so I have to work at least thirty to forty-five days out ahead of that before they could even be entertained to send them to, I post an approval.
We okay right now, right?
We are okay right now, as long as, when school starts back, that's when it's gonna, I'm gonna be in a little bit of a, a crunch there. Um, we had talked about the, uh, push bumpers, the wings that goes on the push bumpers. I finally got the total back on the damage from the deer, and it was a little over seventy-one hundred dollars, so.
That would be a good investment later on.
It, it's gonna be a good investment, because I found them and for the vehicles that we needed for, it wound up being about twelve hundred dollars. That's for all the vehicles, not each, but all, so, uh, eventually we, that would be a great investment, uh, cause it could cut down, plus, uh, I ain't gonna say it's gonna stop all the damage, but it would put a uh, big point in that number, the seventy-one hundred dollars, so. Alright, and then, uh, y'all can see down below the, the calls and stuff. Uh, I was asked to take and get the, uh, number of vehicles that would, that had come in front of our flock cameras. And you see down there, from May seventh to June fourth, there was ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two vehicles. And I'm sure some of those were the repetitive vehicles that are round town.
That's a lot still though, ain't it?
That's still a lot, that's a lot of traffic.
I'm surprised you don't have your more animal calls.
I had that one call.
My lady gonna get a few more.
I've expected it, I just hadn't got them.
When they ask me, I'll say, if you want something done about it, you gotta call. Our police aren't out looking for dogs, not only.
No.
No, I'm not doing that.
A lot of people don't care, but if you care, then, I mean, you know, I tell them, I said, we have a leash law, we should abide by it, but if you have a problem, you've got to call.
Yeah, we have to know it, we don't know it, we can't do nothing about it.
That's right.
Same with noise, ordinances, trucks.
You know, I've, I've had several ask about the dogs, I said, all I can say is, the only way to get somebody to come out there is to call and report the problem.
Let it be known.
Then they'll come.
Okay.
That's right.
That's all I've got.
And, you know, if the neighborhood don't like them, not being leashed, I mean, not being, then do something, you call, stop it.
Yep.
That's right.
Alright, so we, so, in August, we're gonna be short one police for patrol, how will that affect? What time is the shift?
Uh, that's gonna affect, what I've been trying to do is take and keep a minimum, uh, two officers per shift up to later on in the night. Uh, and with the one that's going to the day shift, uh, working the schools, he was the one that I had him on what I call an odd shift, or a swing shift. He would come in at five in the afternoon and work till one in the morning, or he'd come in at six in the afternoon, work till two in the morning. Uh, that way, it put me a couple of officers out on each shift, which is more beneficial for safety and you can take, and if one, you got one call going on and you got two more holding, you know, it's gonna be some time delay there.
Thanks, sir, y'all good with that?
Yeah, we got nine weeks, right, before school start, so we got four meetings, at least four meetings, and if we can see some figures real good, go. It's all good.
Just some advice.
Yes.
Remember, they can't be working, but have any months before they go to the police camp.
Yeah, I cannot take and have a officer employed really thirty days prior to the academy.
Right.
But I have to have that person, whoever it is, through the academy graduated within a hundred and eighty days. If we look at it and it's two hundred days of, then chances are, they're gonna call us and say, hey, look, I'm sorry, we can't do this, you're past your limit. They have worked with us on one or two days, but when it gets to a couple of weeks, they're not, they're not favored to that, they're, they're gonna ship me down, so. Um, also, one other thing I didn't mention, uh, the celebration on the green, we have been having meetings with that. Uh, and I have got with the, the, uh, personnel that's on that board to kinda figure out what we need to do, so we're all in the same mindset of what safety issues and what we need to do as far as the police officers and the police department with the firework.
July twelfth, I'll get that, it'll be fun. Alright, uh, you good, chief?
Yes, I'm fine.
Alright, you coming?
I'll be quick, uh, first of all, I sent you that picture.
Yeah.
Um, what's the plan on that, the drying agent?
I mean, we had, we had.
And that'll be through.
We had a deluge, you know, for about an hour.
I know.
And, and it's dry the way it's flooded up here.
I mean, I know the ground is saturated, but.
But we'll, but we'll get, we'll get our guys to go down and look, see what we can do, cause I'm, I'm sure that there's a way we can divert, you know, water, kinda, but I haven't, I haven't done it.
Okay, and are you through with the paving down there, they keep asking me that, you know, there's a space in between. Alright, and Mitch.
So, you're through with theirs down there, now that's a big hump I go on every time, it'll be.
Well, nobody was complaining about it being paved. Y'all complained about, y'all complained about it being paved all the way down there.
We just want the front of that one done, that's all we ever see it.
We moved it from the front, just the front of it.
Just the front.
Well, there was complaints about it being paved.
Well, it's gotta be, I mean, I'm, I don't live in there, but I travel a lot, that's a big hump you go over. Every time, like a speed bump almost.
Yeah.
What is y'all doing?
Mitch, did you ever check on that at, uh, about that Airbnb that they're trying to?
I checked on that and I have, uh, right now, under our R one, an Airbnb is not allowed. That would, that would be a short-term rental, and so, I've, I've received some materials from, uh, the city attorney in Tuscaloosa and also from the league, uh, to, to put some provisions in our, uh, zoning ordinance about that. But right now, in a, in an R one subdivision, you can't have an Airbnb. I think the only thing, uh, the only place right now that our zoning ordinance allows it is in this new B two zone that we have put around the square and along Walnut, you know, in the, I guess, the uptown business district would allow, uh, an Airbnb either upstairs in a building, you know, if you meet all the qualifications for having, uh, residential space there, or behind the building, if you, if it qualifies, but, you know, it would possibly qualify in residential two or residential three, because rentals, you know, short-term rentals are allowed there, but not in R one.
Okay, so what happens if this individual sets that open, it's already being advertised?
It's, you know, they, they need to be notified by the city.
Okay, gotcha.
But they, they would have to have a special exception.
Okay, I would, I talked to Mitch a minute about it, said about it.
Yeah, yeah, so I got, I got some information together.
Okay, and, um, Mitch, uh, did, have you run that in there yet about the thing for Main Street, about where we approved everything, it had to run for three weeks for approval for jail?
Oh, yeah, that's, that, that should be running now.
Okay, I, I ain't got the paper, that's why I didn't know.
I ran the one thing Lindsay sent me in the email, I'm gonna say I read it in the paper, when I read it last week.
It should be, I think it, I think it's running there, I think we actually sent that one directly over.
I'll check, okay.
Everything should be, if, if things are like, they, if they ran the paper like they were supposed to, we should be able to, uh, have, uh, a public hearing. I've actually advertised it at four o'clock before the next council meeting, at five.
Seventeen, what is it?
That's right, seventeen. So, we should be able to have a public hearing on that and approve it at the meeting at night.
And then it'll be good to go, right?
It'll be good to go, that's right.
Okay, and Mike, our camera, um, you know, we thought lightning had hit it, and I talked to Josh.
Yeah.
And he said it was just a fuse.
It's a fuse.
Okay, so do we have to rescind that, where we were gonna pay half? Wasn't it gonna be like fourteen hundred dollars?
It's gonna be seven hundred for us, yeah, we'd need to.
No, we, we didn't, we didn't have to do anything, we didn't have to even move far enough, it was never even an issue.
But we voted to spend seven hundred dollars.
If needed, so, I mean, if y'all.
Not if needed, it, we voted, we probably needed to change that, just say that we didn't need it and rescind that, I would think, we didn't spend it. I don't know.
It was kind of a non-issue after the, after he called me and said, hey, it's just a fuse, it got blown, thank goodness, so.
Yeah.
Saved us money, but.
Yeah, a lot of money.
Tracy, what do you think, since we voted to go ahead and do that, pay part of it, just?
I don't know, um, I haven't, I missed all that, so I don't.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
I made a motion, we rescind that.
Okay.
In about once.
I'll second it, just cause it gets it cleared up, that we did not spend the seven hundred dollars to fix the camera.
Discussion, all in favor?
Who's second?
I think I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I may, yeah.
And Mike, one last thing, I, uh, spoke a minute to Donovan about the seven cent gas tax, I was concerned about a couple of those uh, checks in there, and he said he would check it out.
Okay.
So, those, uh, gas taxes, um,
There's a date.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, I'll give, I'll give, here's coming, he's coming back Monday morning.
Yeah, he told me, he said he would look into it.
Well, I mean, I.
Let me do a deep dive this week.
He said he had.
I, I know one.
Actually, more than hit the hall is three, four hundred.
I know that one percent sale tax, I know you can do it for street lights and stuff.
Yeah, that's, that goes in general.
Yes, and I know.
And the corporate thing can be used for paving and stuff.
And that has, that's seven.
That's a seven, it's a little wavy.
It's a little wavy, it can get you in deep trouble.
Well, when I asked, I asked, I called, I actually talked to Dorinda and asked her what it was for when I saw it on there, and she said it was used for payroll for street workers.
Which you can do.
Talk, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, down the same.
Got a fire call.
Uh-uh.
Country Wood.
It's where?
Country Wood Apartment.
Oh, that's over at the hospital.
That's where my mom used to live.
Oh, and Tracy, you weren't here, but, um, I bet same tax. Um, Thompson tractor was paid I bet in an amount of four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. Do you have a clue what that was for?
I don't, I'll look it up and see.
Okay, and then, uh, another check was ten thousand for BESE. Okay, and then, uh, another check was ten thousand for V E S E R T S.
Mike might know what those are, the, you know, what the Thompson tractor four thousand was paid on that same.
I found out, it was, it was, it was street, there's no, it was street equipment, I found out.
How about the ten thousand was for what?
I've never seen it, V E, they say it's.
How you spell it?
V E S E R I S.
V E S R I?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe, sometimes they abbreviate.
No, that's how it works.
I mean, sometimes they abbreviate, you know, what, what it is.
Okay, gotcha.
So, we'll, we'll find out.
Alright. Yeah, that's it, Mike.
Alright, this is just a suggestion, and this is, uh, we, uh, we have a lot of people still wanting to be Facebook Live. And I told them I'd bring it back up. Is there any way we can be Facebook Live and just absolutely turn off the comments and let it be? Because some of them are having a hard time finding it on the website, and it ain't easy to get there sometimes, but I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, we, I, I don't believe folks, none of them suggested Facebook Live, none of them, because it turns into a clown show, which is just so.
Well, the comments, if you took them off, it wouldn't be a clown show, but I mean.
They did, they did say, if you're gonna do it, make sure you take the comments off.
The comments is a big issue.
But you post it on your website, you drive traffic to your website, 'cause we have a really good website.
Section.
I mean, it is real hard, I mean, we could do, we can even do a tutorial for everybody, but.
Just something that I can do easier, yeah, Mitch, what's your opinion of that?
Well, I mean.
Most don't even do any of it.
Uh, I'm not, you know, it's, it's up to y'all with whatever y'all wanna do, but I mean, it, it turned into, like, you know, a comedy thing.
The comments does, I certainly don't want it with comments, they come up here if they wanna make their comments.
Several cities had it, Mitch, down there, but in our roundtable discussion.
Mm-hmm.
They turned off the comments.
Right.
And the, and they, that's the only way they brought it back.
Right.
Which we didn't, we didn't vote to get rid of it anyway.
Plus, the Facebook deletes it after thirty days.
But. But we didn't.
So, we got a record now, I'm, I'm on record.
But we didn't, we didn't vote to take it off anyway, but.
Didn't need a vote.
Huh?
Didn't need a vote.
You didn't?
No, no, we need a vote to do it.
I thought we voted to do.
No, Mike wanted to do it, Mike.
Yeah, for transparency, we started doing it, then it turned into a clown show, and then, then I asked some peers, you were at the meeting. And, uh, none of them said do Facebook, none of them, they said, you turn the comments off, you're still gonna have people, have the same fifteen, sixteen people. Get on their pages and link to other people to do it. So, you post it to your website, you drive traffic to your website, that you pay money to, to have them maintain. And you build up your numbers on your website, and you let people get educated about what all we have on our website. Well, you can put in a work order, you put in a complaint, you put in a dollar complaint, you know, you put in, you know, hey, we wanna stop saying we want speed bumps.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it takes a while to do that.
I've just, that's what that, you know, I personally liked it myself, the comment, being on there, not without the comment, without the comments, but I mean, I'm just telling you what citizens want. And let's see, and Tracy, you said last time we got a refund from the IRS. How much did we get? Can you get us a copy of what that was?
It was just where the tax had been overpaid.
But how much and?
Um, it was a, close to a thousand dollars. I can go, I, I'll get the numbers for you.
Was that in the check?
That's good. And we still, it's, we know, we didn't pay any fees on any of that, we got cleared of all that, right?
She said we were zeroed out.
That's good.
In fact, I called today to ask for some information for Donna, you know, like, I, I don't know if the IRS doesn't work on taxes a lot, but anyway, we left a message of what he needed. To help finish the, uh, I guess, the final line of the water.
The water?
Yeah, water.
Okay, um, and we've done some work on the D H R bill, twenty-five hundred dollars.
No, it was more than that, they, they ended up paying the windows, how much would they end up being?
A little over five.
Yeah.
Five thousand.
Everything was champion win.
Been doubled, huh?
Everything was champion win, well, we hadn't done anything in a while since last year.
We, did we bid that or what?
That, some of it bid that.
It is. Who did the work?
Uh, fourteen LLC, fourteen LLC man, they had, they had done, they had done the other, and they only had equipment down there.
And they, and they local, y'all know how I feel about local, don't you?
Well, they did a good job, Mitch Hinkin said tell everybody thanks so much, 'cause it really, really told, it got out there, it looks really good.
And on that, that same thing, when are we gonna get the doors fixed? That's my pet peeve, right?
Gotta be, gotta be in that, gotta be in that.
I thought it was just five thousand.
It was, it was, it was more than that, it ended up being more, but we may pare down the number of doors that need, keep that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just talking about the main one they go in.
Yeah.
Where that's safety.
Well, she, they were the front sides, you know.
Well, I'm all for just making sure one's safe.
Yeah, but she, but, we got a great line of communication, went down there, met with her for an hour, walked around, she, she took the original list that we had, the two face thing, and pared it down, the things that was really needed.
Yeah.
So, it's really, really good.
So, it's gonna be way over five thousand to do one?
Gotta get another bid, we got, they got, they got one bid.
For about five thousand?
Something like that, and we had no need to bid on that, as far as.
I don't know why we'd have to bid that, lots, if we didn't bid that other for five thousand.
Find out.
Okay. And is our voters' list, it gone out in straight now?
Well, that's been, that's been, it hasn't really been a, it's been a tedious process where we're having that map. And the, and Zane is out this week, the guy that we have to deal with, but if you, if y'all, all y'all got copies of that map, you'll look, they say, they say the peach in the blue, or the, whatever that is bottom. The road to us should be the deciding factor, but the colors go over the road back and forth. And we looked up on Google Earth, you can look up the address, they give you a picture from the road and how far it is. So, we've had to do that as far as getting down the weeds on, do they live, do they live fifty yards from the road, or do they live two hundred yards?
So, y'all been working on, you've been working on that?
Yeah, Don, Don, uh, Matt wasn't even on the vote on it, so, we've already called, and, and they're working on that, it's really, we don't generate. Pat, Gordon Restaurant doesn't generate, we get that list from, from a company called E S S in Montgomery that does lists based on the census. So, Monday, when Zane gets back, he's gonna call, Pat told me, they actually been working on it.
Yeah, and also, we need to correct this, that, after our meeting that day, we had our special meeting, I happened to run into, um, Dennis at, at a neat place up there. And I said, we were discussing it, our, we're still operating on the two thousand census, we're not on the two thousand twenty census.
They said that map, they said that map was based on the latest census.
The last one they got for us, according to Dennis, was two thousand.
I found out.
And he said we needed to correct that, because that went out on channel forty-two news.
Before this, y'all had voted to go to the two thousand eighth map.
But that was still based on the two thousand census.
I don't know, but, uh, I think, I think this was on the latest census. Unless, unless he doesn't know what, you know, what Zane's doing, you know, but Zane said, yeah, this is based on the latest, the latest census, so, I, we'll find out.
You'll find out, 'cause I was confused, I said, we don't need to have that thrown out on the news, and that's not right.
Right, I talked to Dennis also.
Okay, well, I just had to say, well, very mean, for that, me and Miss Lincoln saw me.
Yeah, and they easily said, uh, and I was telling them about our, we said, not to worry about that, because, uh, you go by your city map. And city, let me explain something. The city got its city limits, there. County may not have it, you don't go by the county, okay? County don't run the city. So, I call SOS, by Secretary of State, same thing, talk to Dennis, same thing. Your, your city map is your, is your oldest map.
Yeah, the ones you voted out.
Yeah, if, if, if the county don't have it, that don't mean I'm like the city limits, Mike.
Your county has nothing to do with us.
County had nothing to do with us.
I mean, that's city of Senate voting, it's.
Okay, that's.
And they said we voted for the, that fair hope or whatever we put back in there, and then it says it's in there.
It's in there.
They said it was in there, they said it was in there, but it's still up on that map. Color, so.
I said, I thought it was a map, the color.
And I, I checked the numbers and the names, and the names are on a separate one. And that's gonna cost us a profit, 'cause that would have led, Ricky Heard was not, name was not on that.
Derinda has it listed, I guess.
Yeah, well, I got.
I'm always positive Ricky, I'm always positive, we, we, we made sure Ricky was in that district the other day.
When we did that voting last year, with, uh, Megan, he was a cons, he was a constituent, he was one of those voters that did not get counted, okay? So, we was, Megan was supposed to put that in there, because I showed him what he said, and it's.
He got to vote, but they put it aside to make sure, I got you.
Yeah, so.
Y'all do that, don't you, like, when you get up?
We did.
So, we not, we don't, and I think, I didn't tell him, 'cause he would've been very upset, but I let him know that we, he did count.
Yeah.
Afterwards, after we did the, uh, confirmation of, of the election. Uh, but, uh, Dennis did say that, um, that we need to go by our, our city map. Am I right, Mitch?
Mm, that's exactly.
And that's the issue.
That's that.
Yeah.
County has nothing to do with that.
That's right.
Yeah, without.
I mean, I'm not sure on the county, they may mention, 'cause we, we voted on city map, I see, city.
I think, I think where the, I think where the confusion's coming in is that the city gets assistance from the, the county, from Pat Clark, and, and so, that's kind of the basis for the list, but then the list has to be modified based on what we see on our map. So, I mean, she's got a database of all the voters over there that we don't, you know, we don't have.
And, and one of the things I, I do, so y'all can know, I go on my map and my list, and I find some people that are not on my list. And then I go up to Pat and verify that they are in the city limits, they either somehow, when they sign up, somehow they get thrown out of the city limits, and.
Yeah, I think going over my list too.
So, y'all have to go up there and say, uh, if you got any, just go up there. I got, I think I've got about ten that's not on there, that.
Oh, if y'all find something, we'll, we'll give it to us, we'll add it on our list, and we're gonna do a total, to keep.
Always do that, yeah, I gave Derinda a list, uh, the other day I was up here.
Okay, um, I was lost, I was gonna say. Oh, this, um, you might think I'm being petty with this too, but I just, Mike, at your convenience, sometimes get us a contract that was signed when we redid the truck works contract. That was done, the truck works, the latest contract with trucks works. And this is, this is like Don said about something, this is my opinion, but I don't really know how the others feel. I would like to suggest that we go ahead with a forensic audit. That's my opinion, I, I don't know how, what y'all think.
Well.
We'll get, we'll get an estimate on the costs, we can do that.
Well, I mean, I look back through my notes, Brad already had when he brought it to us before, I think the retainer's like ten thousand dollars. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we started, and that's, that's my making a motion, it's up to the county, the other two, that what they're like, they think.
You wanna get an opinion from Don first, or whether it's needed after he gets through with this stuff, 'cause he can tell us, I mean, he's, he's not gonna be biased one way or the other, I mean.
I said.
He's doing a, he's doing.
Well, we were kinda trying to wait, well, what, according to Brad, was like, we were thinking, we'd kinda wait till this audit was over, but this audit should've done been over. So, I'm just, I, my motion is to go ahead and let's just get it started.
Can I walk this in? And under discussion, how much money are we talking about overall?
Fifty thousand is what the damn, damn count was.
Well, looking back at what Brad's notes, I had wrote, had to write it down, it was several, it was back a little bit.
It was a lot.
It's, it can be up to fifty, but it can be as low as thirty, but they go back ten years.
It's, uh, ten thousand dollars down and three hundred and fifty dollars now.
I know when we put city and that kind of financial by, over a forensic audit, it may not be needed. Let me just be honest, I mean, no, I can tell us, I mean, he'll, he'll be the absolute proof.
I know, I talked to Don earlier about the problem, you know.
Yeah, I asked him about it, just me, he and I, and he said, you know, he didn't play it, so. But that's something that's, well, it.
I mean, I feel like, um, with every new administration coming in before any new mayorship or whatever comes in, I feel like there should be, for many, to make sure that it's checks and balances.
An audit without a forensic, yeah, a deep dive, awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, you, every five years, you spend it up, two, you could spend fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know.
Call for the question.
But it's needed.
Uh, motion, what was the motion?
I make a motion that we, we start our proceedings for a forensic audit.
And that means getting an estimate, stuff like that.
Well, Brad supposedly had talked to somebody, that's what he presented here that night, he talked to some guy.
I mean, he's, they can still.
It's wrote down in my books, it was Jason somebody.
He had already had a, a call.
He presented, then we decided to trot away, that was when we thought Don was gonna be through, months ago.
I mean, I don't think Don is late, he's an auditor, you know, he's an accountant, he knows when it's supposed to be ended, and he would tell us, sorry, I'm late, but. I mean, he's, he was telling me that other audits, that other cities have been in in July, you have a deadline before, that you have to give it in to the board examiner.
That's in June, 'cause Don told me that privately, it's.
So, I mean, as far as like saying that he's late, I, I, I might gonna say that, 'cause I mean, he's done a good job for us and been very thorough, and giving us really good suggestions.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about that.
So, we got a motion to proceed.
To start the proceedings, to.
We're looking at that forensic audit again.
No, to start it.
To start a forensic.
But Brad's got some information, he's not here, but I, I look back, it's where I saw it from. He would have ways to contact that guy.
And y'all know Brad can't do business, so I have to see.
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
I'm just, I look back through the notes, I'm, I'm the one that's suggesting it, forensic audit.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, so we got a motion, did you make a motion?
I said.
I made a motion to start the proceedings for a forensic audit.
Okay, Don, Danny, and then Don, uh, any discussion questions?
Leonard thought we needed one, that was your suggestion.
Discussion question, all the thing, huh, you oppose?
Ah.
I'm gonna be opposed too.
Did you oppose or abstain?
Oppose.
I oppose.
I do too. Alright, you think?
Paving. I'm still trying to figure out why the paving stopped in front of my house, but let me say this. We made a motion to do a two-inch paving.
Right.
Anybody with me?
I'm not gonna tell a paving company how to do paving.
I, I, I'm not asking you to do, I'm, I'm just saying this, we, we made a motion to do a two-inch paving on the streets, I think London wanted.
We did do that now, 'cause Leonard wanted three in that, his.
We cut the four.
His contract said two.
Two.
I mean, we, that's what we discussed, I don't know.
And we, 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 we also discussed what streets we was gonna pave, right? We have a list. Well, we, it's, 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 it's two things that happened. First of all, London got a ditch, they got a ditch on that street where we didn't ask to be paved, man.
Hey, uh, could I make a suggestion that we go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Motion to go to executive session.
Say, I'm motion.
Motion, Don, please second. Any discussion question? All the favor, aye, he's done. Alright, y'all.
Is there any other business that's need to discuss after? Thank you, y'all, get after me.
Thank y'all.